What else, okay. May I have a please come to order? This is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet zoning board of appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of this board is final. It is expected does not go to the mayor or the city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Secretary, pull the board.
Ms. Samper, here. Mr. Lethio. Mr. McShane.
Here.
Mr. Mactrey. Mr. Riggs.
Here.
Ms. Roar.
Here.
Mr. Hennessy.
Here. First order of business, for those that were here last month, is approval of the minutes from the July 15th zoning board meeting.
Motion to be in order. Motion approved.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the minutes of previous meeting. Pull the board.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Ms. Roar.
Aye.
Ms. Samper.
Abstained.
Mr. McShane.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy.
Here. Aye.
You're gonna say it loud enough.
Next on the agenda item is citizens to be heard on agenda items. This section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding items listed on the agenda. Anyone speaking on an agenda item is entitled to speak for a maximum of four minutes. It's not a question and answer period, and staff in the zoning board of appeals does not generally respond to public comments. Please note, speakers who engage and conduct interest to the harmony of the zoning board of appeals shall be called to order by the presiding officer and may forfeit the opportunity to speak. Please be aware that you can speak on this if you would like at this time, but you could also have an opportunity to speak when the agenda item is called. But is there anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item? Moving on to old business, public hearing, we have none under new business. First petition is 202142. The applicant is Austin Davis from Integrity Sign Company on behalf of Pops Italian Beef and Sausage. Owner is Joe Habercorn, J.H. Joliet Beef Incorporated. Location of this request is 1866 West Jefferson Street. Request is for a sign variance. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation of signage to allow wall signs that do not face a public street. The ZBA makes the final decision for this variation request. Under site-specific information, the subject property is a former Boston Market restaurant. Pops Italian Beef and Sausage intends to open a new restaurant in this building. Property is .81 acres in size. The property has split zoning, B3 general business on the west half and B1 neighborhood business on the east half. Under surrounding zoning, land use in character, to the north is B3 general business and its Hawk Chevrolet. To the south is B3 general business and B1 neighborhood business, and that's a Pep Boys Automotive. To the east is B1 neighborhood business, and that's Bank Use. To the west is B3 general business, and that's an inventory lot for the Hawk Chevrolet dealership. Under applicable regulations, 4717.21 signs, 4717.213 BB criteria for granting a signed variation, and you can refer to the attachment for that criteria. Under discussion, Pops Italian Beef and Sausage is renovating a former Boston Market restaurant for their business and proposes signs on the east and west building elevations to allow for more exposure to eastbound and westbound traffic on Jefferson Street. City of Joliet zoning ordinance only allows signs that face a public street in the B3 general business zoning district. Therefore, the applicant seeks a variance to allow signs that do not face a public way on east and west elevations of the restaurant. Approval of the variation request would allow a 14.86 square foot catering diamond drive-through sign on both the east and west elevations, as well as a 6.51 square foot Pops Italian Beef and Sausage logo sign on the east and west elevations. Other businesses on Jefferson Street have been granted variances over the recent years for signage that does not face a public way. The other new signage for this location meets city sign requirements and have been permitted. All new signage, including the four signs, subject to this variation request, would amount to 152.47 square feet of signage at this property. Property is allowed up to 432 square feet of signage total. Signage site plan and sign elevations for all signs as part of their renovation project are included as part of the application package. Under conditions, we have none, and that concludes the staff report.
Is this your present? Want to come forward, please? I'll swear you in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
You have an address?
Yes, 1866 West Jefferson Street.
And your name?
Austin Davis.
Okay, any comments you'd like to make?
We are just doing a sign variance application for the east and west elevation to garner the attention of traffic heading east and westbound on Jefferson Street. The north elevation is blocked by various trees, so utilizing the east and west would keep more attention for the Pops.
Good. What else you guys serve besides the beef?
Cheeseburgers, hot dogs.
Regular, the regular.
Yeah, regular.
And how big a chain is this?
They have a pretty good amount there in northwest Indiana. We did a sign out there in Dyer, and they originated in Payless. I know of at least five locations there.
So most in Midwest, or?
Yeah, Chicago, Chicago line Midwest, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
There, oh, there'll be a drive-through?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just had one question, maybe for the staff. In the backup that I see, and maybe there is a fellow, the petition for the variation is blank, the front page?
I'm sorry, what?
The petition for the variation slash appeal. It does have the signature and the note beyond the last page, but the first page, I'll just just copy it and I'm staying.
The owner's signature, you're saying?
Uh, yeah. The whole page is blank. The petition is blank?
Where the, I just where the petitioner's information on the bow? That's blank, and then I do see that paragraph three on the signature case, there is a statement and then the signature.
I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the staff report packet that I sent, but I'm not sure. I'll have to check to see what was about it.
It's probably on file, though.
Yeah, we have an application that's signed here, and everything seems to be filled in and it's on file.
On the file copy?
Pardon me?
On the file copy?
Yes, so I'm not sure which one that you may have had, but everything looks in order on my petition.
Okay, yeah, this is the public, this is the public notice one, so that's on the website.
Okay, we can look into that and see what might have happened, but, you know, if you'd like, I could circulate my paper copy here, but.
No, that's not it. Any further questions? Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the board for discussion, and the motion. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Ms. Roar.
Aye.
Ms. Samper.
Aye.
Mr. McShane.
Aye.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, next agenda item is 202143. The applicant is Kamarr Tiller. He's also the owner. Location is 429 Buell Avenue, and this request is a variation of use. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation of use to allow the continuation of an existing rental unit in the upper level of a detached garage, which would result in the property having two housing units, an R3 use, and an R2 single-family residential zoning district. The main house and property are located at 429 Buell Avenue. The address for the garage unit historically has been 426 Division Street. The variation of use request must be considered by the city council following the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Under site-specific information, this corner lot property is 37,461 square feet in size, .86 acres. Property slopes downwards from north to south. The property includes a 4,000 square foot circa 1890 Queen Anne style house, a 936 square foot garage with upper-level recreation room, an 856 square foot garage with an upper-level apartment, and a hot tub house. In 2004, the zoning board of appeals approved a variance of a side yard setback on a corner lot from 20 feet to 5 feet to allow the construction of a 936 square foot garage, upper-level recreation room. Prior to April of 2012, city allowed more than one detached garage and allowed garages with walls greater than 10 feet and以上. The 856 square foot garage with upper-level apartment is the accessory structure subject to this variation of use request. Current owners refer to this structure as the carriage house because that is what the previous owners in real estate listing stated that it was. However, staff has determined that this concrete cinder block structure was never a carriage house. The garage appears to have been constructed in 1960s. Pope Street directories show a residence at 426 Division Street from the late 1960s onwards. Staff found a circa 2,000 plot of survey that also shows the garage as having a second-story apartment. Surrounding zoning land use in character. Property is located in the Upper Bluff National Register District and is located among other two-story turn-of-the-19th-century homes. Some of the original single-family homes in the general vicinity have been divided into multifamily housing. Land use and zoning for the adjacent properties are as follows. To the north is R5, high-density residential multifamily home. South, to the south is R2, single-family residential, single-family homes. To the east is R2, single-family residential and also single-family homes, and to the west is R3, one- and two-family residential, a two-unit home. Applicable regulations, section 4761, R2 permitted principal uses, section 476.8, R2 prohibited uses, section 4717.28, variation of use. Section 4717.28 variation of use, definition, a variation of use shall be defined to mean relief from strict compliance with the use limitations of this ordinance regarding the classification, regulation, and restriction of the location where trades, industries, businesses, and residents may exist. Under discussion, the current property owner found out that he did not have proper zoning for a second housing unit when he tried to refinance his home in the spring of 2021. Purchased the property in 2018 believing that he could rent out the apartment above the garage, the real estate listing is attached and currently has a tenant living there. The apartment unit at 426 Division Street sits above a garage that is currently being used as a woodshop. The garage is a non-conforming structure due to its side and rear setbacks. Section 4717.22, under nonconformities, subsection three, nonconforming structures of the zoning ordinance allows pre-existing nonconformities to remain as long as the structures are not enlarged, altered, or in any way that increases their nonconformity. The entrance to this apartment unit faces Division Street. Apartment unit has one bedroom, one bathroom, kitchen, and a living room. There's parking for two cars adjacent to the garage with the apartment unit at 426 Division Street. This parking is in addition to the floor bay garage and concrete parking area along Nicholson Street. The apartment unit is what staff would consider to be an accessory dwelling unit since it is accessory to the principal single-family home in terms of size and ownership. Communities that allow accessory dwelling units typically require that the owner of record reside in either the principal or accessory dwelling unit for a minimum of six months of each calendar year, and no more than one accessory dwelling unit be allowed per lot, and that the floor area of any accessory dwelling unit may not exceed 49% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit on the subject lot. The apartment unit at 426 Division Street currently meets these standard requirements. Staff recommends a condition of approval that the property owner must reside in the principal residence of 429 Buell in order to maintain an apartment unit on the property. The Division of Neighborhood Services inspected the property in August 2021, subject to some minor abatements. Neighborhood Services has no concern with the continuation of the existing apartment unit at this location. Since the principal house is owner-occupied, the apartment unit will not be enrolled at this time in the city's rental inspection program under the program's current enrollment requirements. Under conditions, I would refer you to the addendum that was passed out. The Public Utilities Department recently completed their review of the property at 429 Buell and its detached rental unit at 426 Division Street, conformant with the city's water regulations. Since the rental unit at 426 Division Street is located in a detached structure that is already fed by a service line from the main house, and since owner occupancy of the principal structure is a mandatory condition of approval for the rental unit to remain, Public Utilities will require that the property shall have only one meter, one water meter, that the water meter billing be in one name only and not two names, and a second shut-off valve shall be installed between the principal structure and detached dwelling unit. Condition number three has been revised to reflect the city's water meter and shut-off valve requirements. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of this, following conditions would be included. That, under one, that a minimum of two off-street parking spaces shall remain in the future at 426 Division. Number two, that use of the property shall not be expanded in the future. Number three is that the property shall meet the city's water and water meter and shut-off valve requirements, and that the property will have only one meter. Billing for the water meter shall be in the name of the owner of record. Second shut-off valve shall be installed between the principal structure and detached dwelling unit. Four, that the owner of record must reside in the principal house at 429 Buell Avenue for a minimum of six months of each calendar year in order for the accessory apartment unit to remain and be rented out. Should the owner of record not reside in the principal house at 429 Buell Avenue for a minimum of six months of the calendar year, the variation of use for the apartment unit at 426 Division Street shall be automatically revoked. And lastly, number five, should the property be declared a public nuisance by the city council, variation of use shall be automatically revoked, and that concludes our staff report.
Is the petitioner present? Want to come forward?
You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
You name an address, please.
Kamarr Tiller at 429 Buell Avenue.
Any comments you'd like to make?
As he said, my wife and I bought this house in June 2018. We are long-term Joliet residents. I moved to Joliet in 2003. She's lived here for probably three-quarters, 95% of her life, somewhere around there. We initially, when I initially moved to Joliet, I had actually been interested in the food area, and my wife has always loved it. We actually discovered this home because our family was late for Easter dinner at their house, and she was actually just out and driving around, said, "I'd love to live around here one day," and so we ended up buying it. She only sold me on it because of the carriage unit, because I'm like, "Oh, at least we can start building passive income, something I can help my kids with." Then, of course, we're looking to build towards our future goals and things like that. And our current renter is a teacher local to the area. He teaches at Chuco and also at Volusian University. We actually go through a deeper vetting process for all of our tenants. We do things like turbo tenant, which gives us a background check, foundation record check, along with their salary to make sure they can afford the property, and of course, since my family lives on the property, I'm very careful about who I want to rent, who I want to live there, because my two boys are under the age of five, so I don't want, you know, anyone I wouldn't trust being around that gets there anyway. We look, we look forward to being in the food area itself, and we also like all the CAPA events that they hold, things like that. We just enjoy the area, loving everything there. We make sure our tenants respect the area in any way that we can, and as I said, this is our home. We just want to make sure it's all useful and used. We had a pipe burst probably a year before last in our carriage house. My tenant let me know, we fixed it immediately. I would not have known if he had not let me know until like water came down the steps in the winter and somebody at home or something like that, but I want to avoid those types of things. Having it rented gives me an avenue to do better, keep, make sure the house is maintained, make sure that, you know, everything's up to code, everything's what it should be. We, when we found out that the house was, the property is not zoned to rent out the carriage house, immediately I started looking for avenues to get everything fixed and bring to, run to legitimacy. That's actually how I met Jane and Jim. Spoke to Jim briefly once, but he introduced me to Jane, which I am grateful for, um, eternally, and I'm sure I've bothered her plenty of times about anything I can do to help with this or keep looking for it.
Well, I tell you what, I go back a lot of years in history to ask when Nipper Mattel owned it. Spent a lot of time in that home.
Oh.
It's a beautiful place.
We love it.
Obviously, you've got it and taken care of it.
Yeah.
Does the board have any questions?
I have some questions. I saw here about the way it was advertised, and it was advertised as the carriage house. What is the difference in definition between the carriage house and, like, when he bought it and said there's a carriage house, but then we analyzed it and decided it was a concrete structure? What's that, what's the definition? What's the difference there?
Well, I'd be, carriage house would have held carriages and, you know, Model T cars. So it just, I went and looked at it. I did the inspection for the planning divisions end, and there was a carriage house at that location in 1898. I studied the 1898 map of that area, which gives you details of where the structures were located. It is not the same structure as it would have been there in 1898.
Yeah, that's, that's a question. Because, I mean, I, like, working in real estate as long as I have, they're routinely called carriage houses. That's why I was trying to figure out what the difference would be. I guess the carriage houses were converted in, and that's why they're called at that, but there's, there's no difference in the structure. It wasn't, it was just, we did not know it was rehabbed and it was turned into an apartment.
So I was just trying to make the distinction that it's, it's, the staff report's trying to try to make clear it's a detached accessory structure. So you can think, and it doesn't matter if it's a, it was built in 1898 versus 1960. I mean, the land use of it is that it's a detached accessory structure.
Yeah.
We were just trying to make clear it's not actually a carriage house, because there's no carriages that ever would have gone into a 1960s style.
I've always wondered why they, because anytime there's a detached structure, typically in the MLS listing, it will call it a carriage house, so I was wondering why there might be some confusion there, but that explains it. My next question is, when you bought this house, I mean, these realtors are paid pretty good money to tell you what you can and cannot do with your home.
Yes.
And so I gotta be honest with you, I'm, like, being a realtor, I know that, you know, I've done real estate in the Joliet area for so long, I would never in a million years tell somebody that they can rent out one of these carriage houses or detached apartments because I know the rules. And you would think the attorney that you were using for your real estate transaction, that this, this would have come up, but two attorneys and two realtors, so I'm curious what that process was.
So the realtor and lawyer you use aren't local to the area, so they don't know it as well on our end. We don't know about, well, their realtor actually, like, lives in the neighborhood, I think. So for us, when we came to, like, "Oh, have you guys been renting this out? Is this allowed?" And everything, like, "Yeah, yeah, no, we've been renting out forever." Apparently, they had a teacher staying in it before, you know, she moved out and they moved. So for us, it was just more, you know, continuation of what was going on as is, because we assumed, apparently incorrectly, that it was good for us to rent out from there. That's, you know, happily assumed, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I know years ago, I never used to park my horse there. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? In favor?
Opposed.
Opposed? Come on forward. I swear you in.
Barry McHugh.
Swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law.
Yes, I do.
Name an address.
Barry McHugh, 808 Mason Avenue. Here, also representing CAPA, we had a, we had discussions with the homeowner amongst ourselves. We recommend that you do not approve this. There's a number of reasons. On the merits itself of having a external building to your home and converting it into a rental, if that was what this meeting was about, we would resist that. We believe that the addition of more rental units in a neighborhood is detrimental to the character as well as to the value of the property that's there. So on the merits, without it pre-existing, we would resist that. Since it is pre-existing, one of the key arguments being made is that since it's existing, unaware of it, there's a, he has a problem there, that's his, he was unaware of it, and so then he just went out and rented it. If you disapprove it, if you don't allow him this variance, then he will lose that income. And our view on that is that would set a bad precedent, because what you would be actually doing, in our view, is taking somebody who did it wrong, didn't follow the rules, sold the house, and that error was then moved into perpetuity for that property, without going through a discussion on whether or not it was proper to turn, put an apartment in that garage in the first place. So we would resist it putting it in the first place, and we resist having it as an excuse to make it okay, the fact that someone else did it. We recommend that you do not approve this on those two key points.
Not interested in your comments? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I have a quick question for staff, if that's okay. So if this were to get approved, after this tenant leaves, it would still have the same zoning, right? There's nothing that would?
That's correct. As long as it was, as long as the main house was owner-occupied, then they could rent out the back.
As long as they don't sell the property, that, it sticks with them, right? No, it sticks with the property forever?
No. Yes, so if they sold it, the same conditions would be allowed for a future owner, so they would have to reside in the main house for at least six months out of the year, and then they could rent the back house.
So I have a question also. So would this open up that other homeowners that wanted to build on top of their garage, would they then be able to do so as well?
No. No, you know, the only reason this is here before you is the age of this.
My grandfather then, but I just want to.
It's not grandfathered in, that's why he's here. You know, anybody has the right to ask for that, you know, and come before you, but we would, we would look at everything, each case individually, but most likely would not support any new constructions to allow such a thing. It's just the dated aspect of this that, you know, gives us, you know, a little flexibility in being at least neutral on it. You know, we understand both sides, but at the same time, this, this property has existed this way for a while.
So, and I, I'm a spoken user, wrong term, not grandfathered in, since it's not a new law existing now that he will come into, but I just wanted to make sure then, because even though other homeowners can petition for this same type of relief, then would it precedent be set? I mean, how would you tell them no if they say, "Well, I understand I never used my garage in that way before, but I would also live on my property, it's detached, I want to build on it and have additional income as well."
The, the difference is this is an existing situation that has been there since the 1960s.
Is there, to our knowledge, any other situations like this that's out there? Is there, to our knowledge, any other situations like this that's out there that maybe people lived above their garage?
Yes.
But never came forward, so potentially they may come forward and want to.
There might still be some more out there similar to this one. But we've seen requests like this in the past as well.
Jim, I have one more thing to offer for the zoning board. The nineteen sixty-eight zoning map did have this area zoned for multifamily residential that was not included in the staff report. So the time when the unit was there created that multifamily wasn't allowed to use in that area. It is not, it was down zoned to single family.
So in this, when it, the property was zoned, it was allowed and then it is not allowed anymore?
It's not allowed anymore. In nineteen sixty-eight, it was allowed, that area of the city, including Nicholson, Yule, that was all allowed for multifamily residential, which is why when you look at the zoning map, there, you'll still see remnants of, of that. So that was part of the reason why it looks that way.
Well, I mean, honestly, anytime, anytime I've ever entered that neighborhood, when I would, you know, show houses, there are a lot of houses that have these carriage houses. And that's where my main concern is because I used to love going through these houses because they're, they're beautiful and they're amazing. And then you go, oh my God, they have a second structure. And a lot of them are vacant, you know, are vacant units. So this is, this is really tough.
Did you hear any comments, sir? End of the mic. You've been sworn in, Sir William.
So for us, I know the ability to have it revoked is a big deal for us because we haven't, since we've lived there, there have been no complaints, of course. But we would hope that if something were to come up, that someone would come forward to revoke, either revoke it or would let us know so that we can take care of whatever issue may arise. We don't take lightly the effect on the neighborhood or the precedents that could possibly set. I know ours is somewhat unique, but as you said, there might be other houses similar to this that might have a carriage house and might have a similar situation. But I know for us, we have our own set of circumstances to make sure, and we want to make sure that everything's done the right way every time for ourselves.
And staff has said each case that comes up like this is treated individually, where there's no precedent being established here. Okay, chair's gonna close the petition, ask the board for a motion. Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
We have motion to second to approve the petition. Pull the board, please.
Ms. Amper?
No.
Mr. McShane?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Ms. Rohr?
Before I actually officially cast, cast out, this is, this is a very big issue and it's a very scary issue because I do wholeheartedly agree with the Kappa decision and, and what they're saying. The only saving grace to this that I, that I see for making this, you know, exemption is the fact that, that we are going to hopefully give other people the same opportunity because it seems like you are an amazing landlord and, you know, it, this is detrimental to you owning a home. And that really, you know, you having two kids and, you know, fixing the home up, the pictures are amazing, the rental pictures are amazing. I'm hoping that this secures you in the home and it is a big deal. But I, I don't want to weigh lightly to, to letting that slip because this is logically, it should not be. And I think that, that you should let that weigh on you because I, I wholeheartedly agree with, with your neighbors that you can't have some and not the other. But as the chairman has said, I think it is very important to look at some of these by case by case. And you've made a very good case today. So I wish you well lucks and I vote aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
So this will go before the city council, the second meeting in September, to city council for final action. Next agenda items, twenty twenty-one forty-four and twenty twenty-one forty-five. The applicant is Richard Hester. He's fourth generation properties LLC Drowden. Owner is Tim Panagast LLC, sorry about that. Location is Drowden Road, northwest of Theodore Street. The request is twenty twenty-one forty-four, a variation of use. Twenty twenty-one forty-five is a special use permit. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation of use and special use permit to allow a self-storage facility that includes indoor climate controlled and outdoor mini storage units in a B one neighborhood business district. City council makes a final decision on these requests. Site-specific information, the three point eight-six acre subject property is lot two of the ten point four-one acre two lot commercial subdivision at Drowden and Theodore that the city council approved on December first, twenty twenty. The gas and wash fuel, fueling center was constructed on lot one. Property is zone B one neighborhood business district. Access to the subject property will be from Drowden Road. Stormwater detention system for lot one will be expanded and shared to accommodate the proposed facility. Surrounding zoning, land use and character to the north is a comm ed easement and that's zone R two, to the south is commercial and zone B one. To the east is residential, zone R two, to the west is comm ed easement again and that's R two. Under applicable regulations, section forty-seven eleven point four prohibited uses, B one zoning district, section forty-seven seventeen point two eight variation of use, subsection forty-seven dash nineteen point eight finding of fact supporting a variation and you can see below. Section forty-seven thirteen point two A, one or I, special uses B three zoning district. Section forty-seven five point two C, criteria for issuance of special use permit. And I'm not going to read that section about variation of use definition, I read it in the last case. Discussion, under discussion, the petitioner who is the contract purchaser of the property proposes a, to build an indoor climate controlled storage facility with accessory outdoor mini storage units on lot two of the gas and wash Theodore and Drowden subdivision. The petitioner intends to be the operator of the facility and operates other storage facilities in the greater Joliet area. Joliet zoning ordinance considers storage facilities to be a B three special use permit, approved use. Therefore, the request requires both a special use permit and a variation of use approval. I'm going to refer to the addendum at this point. If you'd look for, under clarification, this new paragraph substitutes in staff left off one of the buildings in its calculations. This proposal currently includes a one-story, ten thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot climate-controlled indoor facility as well as six outside access one-story buildings with many storage units. In total, there would be approximately three hundred and ninety storage units of varying sizes. Outdoor storage of any kind is not permitted on site. Proposed site plan, proposed landscape plan and conceptual building elevations are included with the staff report packet. Going back to the main report, proposed hours of operation during which renters can access their storage units will be from five AM to ten PM. Renters of the storage units would access their units through a secured gate. The facility will be staffed approximately thirty hours a week. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of the variation of use and special use permit requests, following conditions would be included. One, that no outside storage be allowed on site. Two, that the special use granted shall hear and terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained no later than a hundred and eighty days of the effective date of this ordinance and the erection or alteration of a building is started or the use is commenced within such period. Under three, failure to comply with any of the above conditions could result in a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And lastly, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it should be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner present? You swear the evidence you brought presents the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Richard Hester, two one three two eight Redwood and Shorewood. Lived in the area for over twenty years, currently operates full bin storage in full city.
Okay, any comments you'd like to make, sir?
Well, when we look for a, a location, storage serves a need of people in a few ways. One is at a time of stressful, life-changing events, death, divorce, moving. And the other is for kind of an ongoing need, I think, extension of their home, their garage or storage space, keeping seasonal items, Christmas decorations, lawn furniture, changing it. At our current facility and along with nationwide norms, our customer base tends to be one to two mile radius from the facility. People like to be close to their stuff. Maybe it used to be thought of as a warehouse application, but it's really not anymore. So when we look for a location, you know, and do something near my home, where I live and part of the community, you know, we want something that is near residents where they have a use, but also doesn't encumber them. This particular piece of property came up, it's adjacent to a newly constructed gas station and a comm ed utility easement. So, you know, when we look at this, it seemed to be an ideal candidate, but, you know, there's a nice buffer of space around it, long enough to work with Jim on the landscaping requirements and things of making sure it's aesthetically appealing. And I think that it should be something that, that can fit into the neighborhood and be good use for the residents.
I have a question just out of curiosity. At the last of our three or four meetings, we've always had petitions for uses such as this for storage. Why is there all of a sudden this great demand? Is that due to the economy or what?
I don't know that it's all of a sudden. Definitely we have seen the largest demands recently, but I don't think the demand is anything new. It has increased. I know, like I said, right now, a good chunk of my customers, my current facility, they're within a mile of a place and they, you know, that's where they keep their things. Death, divorce, you know, that demand never changes. You know, that's always there. Right now, probably the biggest demand that I'm seeing is people coming in saying, you know, oh my gosh, I sold my house in twelve hours for over asking price. My builder is making excuses for, you know, delays in construction. I don't know where I'm coming. So as far as recent demand, I think is, is the slight right now.
There's a tremendous amount of storage, plus four or five boxes of stuff. All the years I've been down there, I've never seen anything like it.
Right. And again, that's, you know, the research we did.
A lot of Amazon packages.
Still, using the area seemed to be a hundred percent occupied and, like I say, for helping the customers during those stressful times, you know, right now, it doesn't seem like they have any availability, so there is a need.
Or have any questions?
How far is the nearest storage facility to your proposed site?
I believe the closest, there's a smaller facility near fifty-nine and Theodore. I believe is the closest. And my understanding that they're typically a hundred percent occupied in the location.
Any other comments? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the board for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion to second to approve the petition. Please pull the board.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Amper?
No.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you.
So this will go with a favorable recommendation of the city council to the second meeting again in September.
Jim, I do have a question.
Yes.
Do they also have to vote for the special use permit or are they just going together?
Um, no, that's probably a good.
I always wondered about that.
Yeah, we should, we should do two separate, to be consistent with what we've done in the past.
Okay, then I'll make a motion for approval on ZBA twenty twenty-one dash forty-five.
Yes, you may.
Yeah.
And I will second hers.
Ms. Amper?
No.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr? Ms. Rohr?
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
There we go.
Okay, so taking care of that one, we can move on to twenty twenty-one forty-six. The applicant is NCS Enterprises Incorporated. The owner of this is the same as the applicant. Under location, this is at one forty-two Aiken Avenue. The request is a variation of use and a series of variations. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation of use and a series of variations to be allow the continuation of a two-unit, an R three use in R two, single-family residential zoning district. The variation of use request must be considered by the city council following the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Requested variations from the zoning board of appeals include a variation to reduce the front yard setback from thirty to twenty point five feet, a variation to reduce the minimum required lot area per family from seventy-five hundred square feet to thirty-nine sixty square feet. Section forty-seven seventeen point two-two non-conformities, subsection three, non-conforming structures of the zoning ordinance allows pre-existing non-conformities to remain as long as the structures are not enlarged or altered in a way that increases their non-conformity. Under site-specific information, the property in question is seven thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet in size. The circa eighteen ninety two-story house was built as a single-family home. According to available Polk Street directories, the house appears to have been a two-unit since at least nineteen thirty and remained a two-unit until the present. The house includes twenty-one hundred square feet of living space between the two units. The house is currently vacant. A rear paved parking area with rear alley access currently provides off-street parking for five cars. The, under surrounding zoning land use and character, the neighborhood surrounding the property is comprised of mostly single-family homes with a few two-unit homes. Zoning in the neighborhood is a mix of R two, single-family residential, R three, one and two-family residential. Land use and zoning for the adjacent properties are as follows. To the north is R two, single-family vacant lot. To the south is R two, single-family, single-family homes. To the east is R three, one and two-family residential, single-family home. To the west is R three, one and two-family residential, single-family home. applicable regulations, section forty-seven six one, R two permitted principal uses, section forty-seven six point eight, R two prohibited uses, section forty-seven six point four, R two yard and lot requirements, section forty-seven seventeen point two eight variation of use, section forty-seven nineteen point eight findings of fact supporting a variation and you could refer to the attachment, and then the definition of variation of use. Under discussion, the current owner purchased the property in August twenty nineteen, believing the building to be a two-unit since it was advertised that way and you could see the listing attached. Current owner learned that he did not have proper zoning for a two-unit when city staff initiated their review of building permits for the renovation of the building. The owner seeks these variances and variation of use to allow for the continuation of the existing two-unit so that he can apply for building permits to renovate the house. There is a unit on each floor of the house. Each unit has two bedrooms and one bathroom. Petition includes the plan of survey for the property and floor plans for the house. Zoning ordinance requires three off-street parking spaces for a two-unit. Property currently offers off-street parking for five vehicles, so the property meets city's parking requirements. Staff from the Division of Neighborhood Services have been working with the property owner on the proposed renovation of this house. Subject to the proposed renovations, compliance with Building Code and International Property Maintenance Code, Neighborhood Services has no concerns with the continuation of a two-unit at this location. So should the city approve the variation of use request, the property shall be automatically enrolled in the city's rental inspection program. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of this variation of use request and, and series of variations to allow the continuation of the two, following conditions should be included. One, that off-street parking spaces for a minimum of three vehicles shall remain in the future. Two, that the public sidewalk stairs leading from the sidewalk onto the real property and service walk shall be repaired according to the International Property Maintenance Code and Building Code standards. Three, that the public sidewalk stairs leading to the, leading from the sidewalk onto the property, service walks and rear asphalt parking lot shall be maintained in the future according to Property Maintenance Code and Building Code standards. The use of the property shall not be expanded in the future. Five, that the property shall meet the city's water meter and valve requirements, which may require a separate water service, external shut-off valve and meter for each unit. Six, that the property shall be enrolled in and comply with the city's rental inspection program. And seven, should the property be declared a public nuisance by the city council, the variation of use shall be automatically revoked. And that concludes our staff report.
Is the petitioner present? Is the petitioner present? We've got one left. Do you swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
Nathaniel Washburn, 111 North Ottawa Street. I'm the legal counsel for the petitioner. I think city staff did a good job of summarizing what's going on. This property was purchased by my client. They've also done other similar renovation work and rehab work on other properties, I think, is it 603 Dover? I think this client has also been working on rehabbing. They bought it, it was advertised as a two-unit, it was purchased, believing it was a two-unit. When they went to go pull building permits, we found out that it was not zoned appropriately. I was not the attorney that had anything to do with the real estate transaction. I kind of anticipated that one coming. I did not do the underlying real estate transaction. This client came to me as a referral based on my experience with the zoning board and the city staff, not for anything related to the underlying purchase. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Another note on this one, like, like the Division Street one, I got, I got a note from my, my colleague that this did originally have R3, one- and two-family zoning and it was reclassified at some time to R2, so...
It was downzoned.
Of the area, yeah, right.
Back in those days, you either had to declare, you wanted to drop out, or many people just didn't bother, so that's why we're stuck with so many of these.
That's correct.
Any other questions by the board?
What is the condition of the unit now?
The current, the...
Both units, yeah, the whole home.
The, the whole home is, as I understand it, in need of some substantial renovation. My understanding is my client purchased the property as the prior owner had left it go into disrepair. I believe it might have actually been a public nuisance, declared a nuisance at one point in time.
I don't know if we have that information, but...
I would say, I, I...
Wouldn't be surprising.
That was mentioned to me by my client that that may have happened at some point. My client purchased it from this individual with the intent to rehab it as it was advertised as a two-unit, and he's in the business of purchasing similarly situated properties and working to rehab them and get them back into productive use.
Is his intention, if this does not go through, to resell the house?
It is unknown at this time. Obviously, it was advertised as a two-unit, it was purchased as a two-unit, and his plans are to rehab it as a two-unit. If the Zoning Board of Appeals and the City Council elect to not grant the continuation of the, of this multi-unit use, I don't know that my client has made a final decision as to how he would proceed with the property at that time.
Any other comments by the board? Anybody in the audience wish to speak a favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the board for discussion and a motion. Motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the petition. Please pull the board.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Once again, we are in the same boat that we were, just a little bit out of goal, and I think you can probably tell what my answer is going to be. There was a different situation earlier where there was a family that was going to be under financial distress and figuring out that whole situation. This is a little bit different. They had two attorneys, they had two realtors. It is within my opinion that they knew exactly, somebody messed up here and they should seek legal repercussions for the purchase in general, because the purchase should have never happened in the first place, if, you know, he made, he made his, you know, bet in this situation, and it's unfortunate, so I'm going to have to say no.
Ms. Efford?
No.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Was it the City Council without recommendation?
I think you need four.
Um...
I think you need four.
Yeah, you need four, so without a recommendation. We would, we would let them know that, you know, it was a three to two vote, but without recommendation, so they, they could decide. So this would go to City Council, second meeting in September.
Will this require a supervisory vote?
I believe so, yes. We could check with our attorneys, but I believe so, yes.
So, moving on. Under old, new business, not for final action or recommendation, the, we have none. Under eight public comments, this section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding the non-agenda items. You're allowed a maximum of four minutes. It is not a question and answer period, and staff in the Zoning Board of Appeals does not generally respond to public comments. Please note speakers who engage in conduct interest to the harmony of the Zoning Board of Appeals shall be called to order by the presiding officer and may forfeit the opportunity to speak. Is there anyone here wanting to do that? I don't believe so, so moving on, we can move to adjournment if you so choose.
Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Pull the board, please.
Ms. Efford?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
We all agree.
Yeah, I love it.
Thank you.